Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on November 17, 2009. I'd like to first give you a couple of reminders, and that is to invite you to pick up any staff reports that you might want and any items on the agenda this evening located in the back. Also for those viewing and hearing this meeting this evening and you wish to follow along, the agendas and staff reports are available on the SanBrunoCA.gov. And all planning commissions are recorded and televised on Cable TV1 and replayed the following Thursday at 2:00. Please, I ask you, to turn off your cellphones for the remainder of the meeting. And we'll call, please.
Commissioner Samut?
Here.
Chair Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi?
Here.
Commissioner Mishra?
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Marshall and Commissioner Chase both called and will not be here tonight.
Thank you. And Commissioner Samut, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is issued today by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting of October 20th, 2009. Is there a motion or any corrections to the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second?
All votes in favor?
Aye.
First? Motion carried. And next item is communication.
No communications at this time, but we will have, outside of public hearings, we actually have a staff report tonight within the context of business, but that will follow the public hearings.
Thank you. And the next item of business is public comments. These are for items that are not on the agenda. So if you wish to comment on anything else that is not on the agenda, this is the time to do so. So is there anyone from the audience that wishes to comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, public comment is now closed. And is there any conflict of interest from any of the commissioners? Thank you. Now start on with our items. And the first item is 131 Anza Avenue. That's a request for use permit to allow an addition which increases the gross floor area by greater than 50 percent and would exceed the square footage of 1,825 square feet of living area with a one-car garage, which equals to 2,059 square feet and results in a lot coverage of 44 percent per sections 12.200.030B, .1 and 12.200.080A2 and 12.200.030B3 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. The applicant is Patrick Mora. And a staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Johnson and members of the commission. The application is for a second-story addition to a house that's located at 131 Anza Way. This house originally had a floor area of 1,123 square feet. The current owner did an addition of 746 square feet back in 1996. That was before the commission at that time for the expansion and also for a minor modification to continue an existing three-foot setback. So that previous addition from 1996 is included in our current calculation for the expansion in floor area. The current proposal is for a 468-square-foot addition, so that would create a second floor to the existing one-story home. The application also includes a new second-story terrace, which is located off that new second-story master bedroom suite and is located approximately in the center of the roof. So the project is before you for three reasons this evening. The first is that they are proposing 2,059 square feet of living area with a one-car garage. As you're aware, the threshold with a one-car garage is 1,825 square feet. The second reason before you, it's over the 50 percent expansion in floor area. And again, that does include the previous addition from 1996. And thirdly, it is slightly over the lot coverage requirement, and that's actually an existing condition. They have a covered patio to the rear of the house, and it's just barely over, and so we're making that official with this application as well. Staff worked with the applicant quite a bit in developing their application in terms of how much floor area would be appropriate with a one-car garage, and then also in regards to the design considerations. And so they did make quite a few changes to get to Architectural Review and then also to get to this point this evening. So staff does now find with those changes that the addition is well-integrated into the existing house, and it would be compatible and consistent with the neighborhood. The colors and materials are proposed to match the existing house, and with those minor design recommendations that we made, it has architectural features on the second floor that are consistent with the first floor. The Architectural Review Committee heard the item in October. At that time, they conferred with staff's recommendations for the design, which the applicant agreed to implement. And the Art Committee also thought at that time that the living area of 2,059 square feet or just over 2,000 is an appropriate size with a one-car garage at that location. There were a couple of considerations that went into that discussion. First of all, there really is ample street parking on Anza Way. It's not particularly parking-impacted. They do have a driveway that can accommodate two small cars or at least one car in their driveway. And they have shown pictures to staff that show that their vehicle does fit into the garage that they have currently. Secondly, when they did that addition in 1996, they actually relocated the kitchen and did quite a bit of work on the inside, so the kitchen is now actually immediately behind the garage. And so they would have had to really substantially reshape the entire floor plan of the house to be able to provide the side-by-side garage, which in fact, in this case, would be very difficult to fit. Or like we've sometimes seen in this style house, the tandem garage would have meant relocating their kitchen. So the combination of those factors, the Architectural Review Committee and staff, does think that this is an appropriate amount of living area with the one-car garage. Staff sent a courtesy notice and legal notice to neighbors. We have not heard any concerns. We did get a letter of support from the next-door neighbor, particularly in regards to the second-story window. There had been some discussion along the way about whether that would be a bay window, but staff recommended a regular window, and the next-door neighbor does support that, changing it to a regular window. So we have not received any concerns about the project. So staff recommends approval based on findings of fact 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 12, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the commission have any questions for staff? Thank you.
Thanks.
If the applicant can please step forward and state your name, a description of your project, please.
Good evening. My name is Albert Bazuzzi, and actually, we've been living in this house for 16 years. At that time, unfortunately, when we did the addition, we didn't have the third kids at that time. And we actually would appreciate the approval of having this addition because we have the three kids, that they are staying home and they're going to the Cappuccino School and Alecris Tally School. And that's why we needed this extra space, basically.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to comment on this project? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to commission discussion. If there's not any comment, is there a motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I make a motion that the commission approve use permit 9-20 based on finding of fact 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 24.
Second?
Please remove in second. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And please note that there is a 10-day appeal process in this matter before you can commence any action. You're very welcome. The next item on the agenda is Sneeze Lane, and it's a request for a parcel map of a subdivision of one lot into three lots, a planned unit permit for the development of three new homes per section 12.20, 12.88, and 12.116 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. And a staff report, please.
The item before you is a request for a parcel map and a planned unit permit to allow the development of three new single-family homes. Subject site is located along Sneeze Lane. It is currently a vacant site of about 17,425 square feet. There are existing single-family homes to the rear of the site and the city's pump station to the west of the site. To prepare the site for the planned development, the applicant would be required to remove approximately 21 eucalyptus trees. As you noted on your site inspection, this is pretty heavily wooded site at this point. Also noted, a condition of approval that would require clear area around the houses to be maintained for the fire department as a condition of approval. So that would require all these eucalyptus trees to be removed. The applicant, as I indicated, is requesting a planned unit permit to allow a little bit more creative site planning to encourage a cluster development at this site. And what that PUP would allow would be reduced lot size for each of the new single-family residences, as well as reduced setbacks. And what you're getting in exchange for that reduced lot size and reduced setbacks is about 12,000 square feet in open space. So each parcel created would be just for the single-family homes, and then the rest of the area around it would be maintained as common open space. So they would be establishing a homeowners' association, as well as CCNRs, to maintain that common open space. As you noted on the landscape plan, to the east of the property of the homes, there's a small little area that would then be kind of a common gathering place, a landscaped feature for all the homeowners to enjoy. The Architecture Review Committee reviewed this, the home design, as well as the site layout at the October 15th meeting. The committee recommended adding two guest parking spaces, and the applicant was able to revise the plan, as you see before you, to have those two off-street parking spaces. There would not be street parking directly in front of the site, so you would need to utilize your two-car garage and as well as the driveway, and then we would have those two guest parking spaces off-street. The committee also recommended that the building colors be modified and incorporate a trellis feature on the middle building. And the applicant has incorporated all of those items. Can you bring up the color sample? We have the color board as well as a color sample, and I think actually, one of the committee members actually wanted happier colors or brighter colors. So the applicant has prepared a few different options for your consideration. On the board is the original proposed colors, and then he's prepared three different alternatives for your review and consideration. And as well as I indicated, that trellis feature has been added to the middle building. The architect has also reviewed the landscape plan to incorporate trees that are more appropriate for San Bruno's climate, and staff would like to add a condition of approval to require that all the new trees planted be at least 24-inch box-sized trees. So that would be a condition in addition to the ones that you have in front of you, and we would add that condition under the planned unit permit. I think that's about it. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions. The architect and the property owner are also here this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
Some time ago, the city passed new laws that require a certain amount of time for each building permit, and if the permit isn't done, they have to have a extension, if it's permitted at all, by staff approval. And so my question is, in this document, under the planned unit finding number seven, it says the applicant demonstrated they plan to obtain a building permit in six months and intend to complete construction within a reasonable time. Will there be a time certain for the permit for this work?
The time, as you indicated, would be governed under our length-of-construction ordinance, and I forget, but timing is based on valuation or ...?
It's based on valuation of the project, but most likely for a new home, it would be a two-year construction time period that they would have to complete it in, from the time they actually pull the building permit.
So would it be fair to modify this finding to reflect, instead of a reasonable time, a time determined by the building permit requirements?
We could amend it, but actually, the PUP finding is actually straight out of our municipal code. Those are the findings you have to make for a PUP. So what we could do is add an additional finding that basically states that they will also build it within, once they pull the building permit, they will build it within the timeframe specified within the code.
Thank you. That's very enlightening. I didn't know there was a exact wording that had to be followed. Is that correct?
Well, you could probably amend the wording, but that is the exact wording within the code, as it's found within the municipal code.
So it's probably prudent to add a condition that refers to the building permit?
That's the way I'd recommend.
Very good. Thank you.
Add it as a condition, then, rather than a finding?
Uh...
Additional finding?
An additional finding.
You can do that. Thank you.
As a matter of fact, if you would refer to number seven as the new finding would be an elucidation of number seven.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
If the applicant can please step forward and give us the summary of your project, please.
Good evening, commissioners. I didn't really prepare anything. I hope the drawings and the boards and so on speak for themselves, so if you have any direct questions, I'd be happy to answer them. There's one thing that we wanted to add about the green design is, I talked to the owner, and we're probably going to pursue doing photovoltaics on the roof since two of the units have really good southern exposure and pitched roofs. And then the middle unit, we could probably do something on the eastern side. So if you have any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Through the chair.
Through your chair.
I noticed you had some good public outreach in having a meeting on May 18th.
We did.
Although no one showed up. Did you have any opportunity to speak to the neighbors about the property?
Actually, the history of this project is, goes back about a year and a half ago, where we had two single-family homes approved. And at that time, we did have an outreach meeting, and there was a lot of interest, and we did mitigate a few things. And then, as financial times came upon us, then we kind of went back to the drawing board and approached the planning department and tried to get another unit to make it just more economically viable. And the next outreach meeting we had was the no-shows, and it almost seemed like there were bigger concerns that the neighbor had, you know, that the neighbors had at the time. So we tried.
Very good. I thought it was good. Thank you. I was just curious if you had had a chance to talk to him, and evidently you did. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to comment on this project? Hearing none, public comment is now closed, and we'll bring it back to Planning Commission for discussion.
Commissioner?
I'd just like to express my gratitude for proceeding with the photovoltaic systems. I know we discussed that at Architectural Review, so I appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Any additional comments or motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to move that the Planning Commission approve parcel map PM 9-1, subject to conditions 1 through 26, and planned unit permit 9-2, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 31, based on findings 1 through 9, plus a finding number 10, plus an additional condition about trees being at least a 24-inch container, as requested by staff.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There's a 10-day appeal process before any action can take place. The next item, 5C, is 1156 Montgomery, and it's a request for a use permit to allow an administration and dispatch office for a limousine service in an industrial zone for section 1296-150C1F. Staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to locate a limousine service within the M1 Industrial Zoning District. The site is located on the east side of Montgomery Avenue between Atlantic Avenue and Scott Street. It's a 5,000-square-foot parcel and is developed with a 2,500-square-foot warehouse. The warehouse is set 50 feet back from the front property line, so it's located on the rear half of the lot. In the front half of the lot, there is four parking spaces, as well as two landscaping strips, which total 400 square feet, which actually meet the municipal code requirements for landscaping in this district. The applicant currently operates a limousine service called Quicksilver Town Car Service, and they operate out of San Francisco. The fleet consists of eight vehicles. However, it is important to note that there are two full-time drivers that take their work vehicles home. So at the subject site, there will be a total of six vehicles, not eight, but six vehicles at the site. Regarding employees, there will be one dispatcher who will be present during all hours of operation. Additionally, there will be two other employees who will be present during weekdays during normal business hours. And then there's also one part-time bookkeeper that will be there three to four times a week. When analyzing this project, staff really took a close look at the existing neighborhood, and this neighborhood consists of some single-family homes and many auto-related uses. And when you go out to that neighborhood, you really notice that parking is extremely parking-impacted neighborhood, so parking is a concern. However, staff has addressed these issues as conditions of approval and finds that with these added conditions of approval, that the proposed limousine business will not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Specifically, staff has added conditions regarding that cars within the fleet shall be parked within the existing warehouse. Additionally, office employees shall park in the four parking spaces located in front of the building, and as well, no street parking will be permitted with this business. So all parking will take place on-site. Therefore, the parking will not get worse as a result of this project. Also, a condition of approval has been added prohibiting any washing, maintenance, repair, or bodywork of any motor vehicles on the site. Staff finds that the limousine business is consistent with the intent of the zoning district and is consistent with the other auto-related uses within that district. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve use permit 09-027 based on findings of fact 1 through 3 and conditions of approval 1 through 18. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff? Thank you. The public hearing is not open, and if anyone would like to, excuse me, can the applicant please step forward and give us an overview, summary of your project?
My name is Philip McAfee. I'm general manager of Quicksilver Town Car. We've operated a corporate sedan service in San Francisco since 1992. We have no specialty vehicles. We operate six Lincoln Town Cars, one Toyota Prius, and one Chevy Suburban. We've had this fleet level for about seven years. I don't anticipate any changes. We are looking to move closer to the San Francisco Airport and have covered storage for all of our vehicles.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this project? Hearing none, public comment is now closed, and bring it back to Planning Commission discussion. There is no comment? Is there a motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I move that the commission approve use permit 9-27 based on finding of fact 1 through 5 and conditions of approval 1 through 18.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There is a 10-day appeal, a 10-day before you can take any action on this project. Thank you. And 5D is 555 El Camino Real, and it's a request for temporary use permit to allow a construction staging area in a parking lot per section 1284-030 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The application is for a temporary use permit for a construction staging area in the city parking lot, which is located south of the fire station. And so you may recall that the municipal code was amended to really specify that a construction staging area did need to be approved by the Planning Commission. That was a change made in 2007, so we haven't seen a lot of these applications come before you. But you have the authority to approve a construction staging area for up to one year under the municipal code. The applicant is under contract with the city to do the landscape improvements to the medians on El Camino Real. You've probably seen this project happening. The applicant, in fact, was not originally aware that the temporary use permit was required, and so they have been using that southeast corner of the parking lot since approximately July 24th. And so they have complied now that they're aware of the situation, and we've been coordinating with them, as well as with our own internal city staff, to make sure that the process is followed completely. And so they are proposing to use the seven parking spaces that are in the southeast corner. Since they have been using it now for some time, we have seen that they have kept the site very clean, and we have not received any concerns or complaints from any of the neighbors. So staff does have some confidence at this time that it can go forward in an appropriate So due to the high visibility of this location, we have included several strict conditions. Specifically, we've asked that the site be cleaned on a daily basis. We've specified that they cannot store any building materials or plants. Only the equipment can be stored at that location. And we've also specified that there should be no maintenance of the equipment on the site. The project is expected to be completed in March of 2010. However, staff would recommend approving the temporary use permit through July of 2010 in case of any unforeseen conditions. And this would be one year from the time that they actually started the construction project. And so we also have added a condition, since we're not sure exactly when it will end, that they remove all equipment and clean the site within 14 days of the completion of the project. And so staff would recommend approval of the temporary use permit based on findings 1 through 3 and subject to conditions 1 through 7. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I don't even want to ask this, but it almost asks itself, did you consider or do you have through the construction contract a condition that the applicant will restore the parking lot if it's damaged by the equipment storage?
I think that they would have that as part of the construction contract. I think it could be appropriate to add it as a condition here tonight as well.
Agreed. Without having the construction contract in front of us, I would recommend to go with your recommendation, if you are going to make it, to include that as a condition. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. The applicant, can please step forward and give us your name and also an overview of your project, please.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Tran. I've worked for J.J. Winson Corporation. We are here to ask for permission to use ... We are here to ask for a permission to use several parking lot space for our equipment storage. Do you have any question for us?
Do you, excuse me, I'll ask the staff first, or the commissioners. Are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Do you, have you read all the conditions, and are you in agreement with including the last point that was brought up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the commut, public, that have any comments on this matter? Hearing none, we'll close public comments and bring it back to planning commission discussion. There are no comments, questions, is there a motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Bisari?
Motion that we approve, use permit nine, zero-zero-four, based on findings of fact one through three, and conditions of approval one through eight.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been, been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, and there is a ten day appeal process before any action can take place.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to ask staff to, that they assign someone to take some photographs of the existing conditions, because if you didn't do it before, at least you'll have something now.
We will do.
So, you know if there was some damage.
Thank you. Good, good point taken. Next, famous conduct of businesses, residential design guidelines.
Thank you. As, as the planning commission remembers, just a few short weeks ago, the planning commission and the city council met in a joint format to review the residential design guidelines, the draft version. I was not there at the meeting, but I heard that Laura did an excellent job in my place presenting the residential design guidelines, and where we've got to, through, to this point, through a subcommittee process that included two planning commissioners, as well as two city council members. And because of, it was a short timeframe of study session, we were able to get through the document itself, but not to the policy changes that were recommended by the subcommittee that would both make this a more effective document, as well as a document that's consistent with the municipal code. So, there are three areas where we are recommending policy change or code changes. We did give the same presentation to the city council last week, and they provided us with feedback, and feel free to stop me at, at any time if you have any questions, or if you want to give me feedback on any one of the individual policies. The first has to do with a consistency finding, and not many people in San Bruno know that not all additions or exterior modifications to single-family or two-family homes actually have to go through an architectural review process. I would say only about ten to twenty percent of them have to do that, and that's only if they require minor modification, if they require a use permit, or something that requires discretionary review. If not, it goes straight to a building permit. Somewhat unique about San Bruno, although our planners do our best to recommend changes during the building permit process that would make it more architectural, architecturally compatible, there's nothing within the code that states that the homeowner would have to implement these changes. So, what we, one of the first recommendations of the subcommittee was that these residential design guidelines should apply to any homeowner that's proposing exterior changes to the home. So, anyone that's changing the look of their home, or bumping out an addition, something that would change the appearance, they would have to be compatible with the residential design guidelines. And the way that this would occur is amending the municipal code to say that any addition or any exterior change that requires a building permit, requires the community development director to make a finding that that design is consistent with the basic design principles within the minute, within the residential design guidelines. And the reason the subcommittee and staff feels that this is a good route to go is that, number one, it gives teeth to the residential design guideline, actually puts something within our municipal code that someone on staff for lower-level additions actually has to make that finding, but at the same time, it allows flexibility so that the homeowner doesn't have to meet each letter within the residential design line, design guidelines, but just has to make the general spirit or intent of the design guidelines. So, that's the first half of this area. The second is that the same finding would be applied to things, to items that are heard by the architectural review committee or the planning commission. So, you would also have to make that finding that a use permit or an addition is consistent with the basic design principles within the residential design guidelines. I don't know if the planning commission has any questions related to that?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I, I didn't find attachment one, the table.
Let me take a look. Okay, that was not there. Which table was it? Okay. We, we, what we will do is, that was a, it was basically a written form of what I'm saying, of what I'm giving the presentation tonight, showing what the policy, what the policy change is and the reason behind the policy change. What we will do is include it, when we actually take these code amendments and the residential design guidelines to the planning commission, we'll also provide you with that table. I apologize for that, for that not being in there. So, ask me extra questions, just in case, if you have any. The second one has to do with parking. Tonight, we had an application for an existing home, and as you know, with, as the planning commission knows well, if you have an existing home in San Bruno with a one-car garage, the only reason that you would be triggered to put that second garage space in is if you exceed eighteen-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet of floor area. So, there's many homes, there's a lot of homes in San Bruno that actually are built with one-car garages and do small additions, have, still have a relatively small home and unable to keep that one-car garage. Our current code is, actually, isn't consistent with that. For new homes, regardless of the size, you have to build a two-car garage, and also, regardless of the lot size, you have to build a two-car garage. So, this is made for many awkward designs, where you have a twenty-five-foot wide lot or thirty-seven-and-a-half-foot wide lot that's dominated by the garage, or you have a two, side-by-side garage, where basically the front facade is entire, entirely garage, or they opt for a tandem garage space, which makes for a very awkward floor plan, which makes an unusable first floor with maybe a family room in back, and just not a lot of usable area, and the second garage space doesn't end up being used in the long run. So, what this change would do is make the two consistent. If you decide, for substandard lots, if you decide to build a home that's less than eighteen-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet in living area, you'd only have to provide that one-car garage. And I think that would have two direct impacts. That would, the first direct impact is that there would be better design, because you wouldn't have a garage be the dominant, dominant characteristic of design, and the second would be that you're encouraging smaller homes by having the incentive that you only have to put, only have to spend money on this one-car garage space. So, I don't know if you have any questions regarding that policy?
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
All right. This third one, we presented to the city council, and we actually, and they, they gave us feedback on it. We presented with three different options, and we are looking for the planning commission to give the feedback on this as well. Within the current code, there's two landscaping requirements, or two impervious surface requirements. The first is that you have, you can't have more than eighty percent impervious surface within your lot, and what, for people listening at home, or for planning commission's sake, impervious surface doesn't allow rainwater to drain into it. Pervious surface is landscaped area, or some type of pavers that actually allows rainwater to drain into the ground. So, we have the eighty percent requirement, but that applies to the entire lot. So, you could actually meet that twenty percent pervious surface requirement anywhere with on, within your lot, which leads to a lot of homes in San Bruno, not a lot, but in certain areas, a lot of homes in San Bruno, completely concrete front yards. This has two, this leads to two problems. A, it's a drain on our storm water system. By having this, every, all the rainwater go directly to our storm water system, which is, which is older, it, you know, you're, you're putting a lot of burden on that system. And then, from an aesthetic standpoint, it's not something that we encourage within the city to have a completely concrete front yard and have, and not have landscaping impervious materials in there. So, with that in li, with that in mind, the residential design guidelines propose requirements, and we are proposing three different options. The first two options would actually amend the municipal code and require that even if we came across a case where someone already has, has, you know, completely concrete in the front yard, the city would have the ability to actually make them change that to meet these requirements. So, the first is that you would have to amend it so that there has to be pervious surface material within the front yard. But it would not specify that it has to be living landscaping material, but it could be pavers, or something along those lines. The second option would say, be about the same, but it would also say that that has to be living plant material. So, that's certain, that all of it would have to be living plant material. And the third option would say, you keep it in the residential design guidelines, but you don't actually amend the municipal code. So, it would be more of a slow progress, where you would only be able to influence the applications that are before you, and not problem areas within the city. To relay the city council's recommendation on this, they kind of, they, they like to blend the first and second policy, in that they would prefer that not all of it have to be living plant material in the front yard, but at least a certain percentage of it be living plant material, and they did like to see the municipal code amended, so that, not necessarily, not necessarily giving the direction that we should go out there and make everyone, make everyone tear up their front yards if it is all concrete, but more treat it like we have our fence policies right now, where we have some outdated fence, fences within the city of San Bruno, and we basically, on a complaint basis and on problem basis, we enforce the current municipal code. So, with that, those are our recommended changes. The next step with this is after we get your, after we get your direction, we'll make the changes that were recommended at the joint study session, and then take it through the approval process, which includes back to the planning commission for both the design guidelines and the municipal code changes, and then to the city council for final approval. So, we could take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Through the chair.
Commissioner, Anne, Mr.
My question is towards the third option, which is, sorry, I've lost track of which option I'm talking about, but essentially, the idea is that if someone decides that they're going to not plant grass and not grow anything on it, but the top soil is exposed, or they do zero-scaping, how is that calculation allocated? I mean, it seems like if someone decides, I'm going to totally neglect my lawn, or my front yard, and I'm trying to figure out how that works.
That would, that's a, that's a good question. It's something we would have to work out within the code. I believe performance standards for commercial require that the landscaping actually be living landscaping. We also have requirements within our municipal code related to, you know, tall grass and dead grass when it comes to the fire season, but I think that's the recommendation that we could take, that if someone does want to do, you know, zero-scaping, or they do want to do, you can't just have a dirt front yard to meet the requirement.
Through the chair. I, I guess the, where I'm heading in this is, if for zero-scaping, you cover your front yard with wood chips, and you do tree plants, does that count? I mean...
That, well, the way that the city council moved forward with it is that they said they wanted to see some living, some living plant material there. What they really want to see, and what we're going to address within the zoning code, as we do our whole sustainability audit within the zoning code, is that it be a native drought-tolerant landscaping, something that may not actually require irrigation, or, you know, at most requires minimal drip-type irrigation, or something that's easy to maintain. So, I think that if we did do something like you're saying, and actually, something similar to what the city council said, is like, they'd like to see some mixture. So, if you did want to have some bark or some rocks in your front yard, that it'd also be mixed in with some drought-tolerant landscaping.
Through the chair. I think the, my, my intent would be to promote, to write it in such a way that it promotes, promotes prevention of storm water, addition to storm water, essentially. So, if you have, I'm, I'm thinking about in my yard, where I'm on a slope, and if I don't landscape it, or if I landscape it badly, it, all the water is going to drain just right off the curb into the, into the storm water system. But if I create in such a way that I can make some swales, or some really, if I can create some depressions, or create some kind of an environment where I can mitigate water from running off, then I'm actually satisfied the intent, but not really done too much. I don't know, I'm thinking of it in that direction, where you get the intent, but, you know, essentially, you're not creating an overburdening situation.
Correct, and I think if done correctly, that if it just wasn't dirt, if it was some mixture of rocks, or bark, or something like that, you would meet the dual intent of aesthetics as well as storm water impact.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
My first question is a facetious one. Will, will there be a competition for the badge for the aesthetics police?
There, the beautification task force may, may look, and maybe they will have, but maybe, I know that they do have an award for landscaping and best improvement, so maybe this will play into future award winners.
Perhaps a Warhol painting.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson.
Let's see. The, the concern, the reason this comes to mind is because of the serious question here. One, one of the things you said was that this impervious surface here on number one, it could be imperv, it could be pervious pavers. In other words, those modern pavers that perhaps have openings where some grass or green material can grow. And at the same time, those, one of the purposes of those oftentimes is so that vehicles can drive over them and, and not make rut, ruts. But I can see how they might also drive over them and park. Is there currently an ordinance that specifies how much of the front yard can be used as parking?
Yes. It's not actually a certain percentage of the yard that's, that you could use as parking, but it dictates where within the front yard that you could park. You're allowed to park on the, in the driveway and on the short side of your yard. So, if you, if you're looking at a home, and you have a driveway, and the garage is centered to the left of the home, you're allowed to park on the left-hand side, but not able to park on the wide side of your lot, which is the right side.
Matt has a drawing, if you want to see it.
Yes, I'd like to see that. Well, okay, ba, basically, the, and, and the reason I'm asking these questions, these are going to sound like negative questions, but the reason I'm thinking of them is because some of these approaches are so sweeping that they could be very, they could hit an awful lot of properties in San Bruno, which essentially means that you could have a, a law that's almost asking to be flouted simply because enforcement is totally impractical. Not to mention that if a majority of the citizens that were affected didn't like it, you just end up reversing it as soon as you put it out. So, what I was trying to think of was, how can you do some of these approaches and have them be practical? One of the things I, I would suggest to staff is, and I think you've done, probably done part of this, but not just in, there, I'm, I'm thinking on Taylor Street, there's some areas that are all concrete in front of the residential areas. And in those cases, it's almost hard to see anyone coming out there and being required to jackhammer all that concrete. So, the, the first instance is, what if you have virtually the entire front paved already? How does your new ordinance affect this?
If, the first thing that I'll mention is that the homes, many of the homes on Taylor, I mean, the, the biggest areas where it's concreted, there's a lot of homes in the avenues that have been fully concreted over. There's homes in the area around the heart of the city, around Taylor, and then Garden, and those areas where there is all concrete in the front yard. One suggestion that the city council have, which I think is a, is a good condition, is that in places, in properties where there's substandard front setbacks, so setbacks less than fifteen,
Yeah.
the community development director has the discretion to either waive the requirement or, or reduce the requirement on a case-by-case basis. And this is because you have many homes in Taylor that have maybe five-foot, seven-foot setbacks, or just one of, you know, some, a lot of it, maybe it's just a twenty-five-foot wide lot, where a lot of it's dedicated to a pathway, or some way to actually get to the home, where it wouldn't be practical to have sixty-five percent, or whatever percentage landscaping within the front yard. So, I think that would reduce the number of cases that we would actually have to take on. I think the fence analogy is probably the best one. When we amended our fence codes, when, fence codes have been amended throughout the years, it has left a lot of fences within San Bruno inconsistent with the fence code, and we typically only enforce those, our code enforcement division is on a complaint basis, so we only enforce those when we get a complaint. so we only enforce those when we get a complaint or we, we see something that's causing a problem. So I think we would take the same approach to this. Where if, let's say there was stormwater problems within the immediate, immediate neighborhood in terms of capacity, um, I think that we would have to go and take a look at what's causing those problems. And if that ended up being the homes, we'd have to find some way uh to mitigate that.
Well, convinced, coincidentally, for whatever reason, quite a few of those places are in the flatter sections of San Bruno, which are guaranteed to have drainage problems.
Correct.
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
Okay, I just had a couple more, if, if I could. How about, there, there are quite a few places that are not paved, but people are parking vehicles in a way that doesn't meet the allowable residential parking on this figure that staff provided. Uh, is that one that you would approach only on a complaint basis also?
We've, we've typically, yes, and what, what, what usually happens is we'll get neighborhood complaints that basically say, I'm tired of everyone on my block parking this way. Uh, can you please go out there? And then we'll go out there and we'll, we'll tag the homes with notice to comply. Um, and generally that solves the problem for a while till it, till it comes back. You know, part of the problems in those neighborhoods are lack of parking, because people have committed their garages, aren't using their garage, they use that area. So that is a, that is an ongoing struggle. Some of it, you know, over the years, if we, we enforce this rule, will be, the struggle won't be there anymore because it's more difficult to park over a slight landscaped area than it would be to park over. Even, most of those areas that people park in their front yards, some of them may be dirt, some of them may be dead lawn, but a lot of them are the ones that have been con- are concrete.
Okay, and so the, this helps clarify my thinking on this. I'm thinking that oftentimes, these kind of regulations, which have the potential for being problematic or difficult to enforce at best, uh, it's better to take them stepwise. In other words, do something fairly simplistic, and if that's working out, take another step. And so what that was, what I'd like to suggest is that you consider an approach where the requirements are applied to projects that are getting building permits or planning commission permits. And then focus on ones that aren't getting any permits as another step. Don't, don't drag all of those people into the same enforcement effort. It's, it's uh, it almost seems to be uh unreasonable on the face. Thank you. And, and I think, I think generally, I was on the, I am on the committee that's involved with this, and this has been one of the most problematic things. And I'd like to mention it to the commission as a whole, and we've met with the council representatives. A lot of times the issue has been, well, we now have this document, there's guidelines for, for uh good development, more or less. But the, the question immediately comes, is, is, are people gonna look at this and say, oh, that's nice, and do whatever they want, or is there gonna be some kind of ordinance that says they have to pay attention? Because if there isn't, many people are not gonna pay any attention at all. The problem being that it brings up some questions like this, which I think are very challenging. I thank the commission for their patience.
Welcome. Can I show you, Hattie?
I'm gonna retract it.
You retract, okay. I have a question. Um, if there are homeowners who purchased their homes uh that were paved fully or just compromised with any, any greenery, uh, is there any opportunity or funds or, you know, that budgets are cut so drastically at these times? But is there anything, if they were to come, a group of people to come and say, you know, we, we would love to do this, we need support? Is there anything available to them?
I, I don't, I'm not aware of any funds. I mean, if there are, you know, uh, through a redevelopment agency, if they're doing larger projects, we have helped out with construction with low interest loans and things along those lines. But I can't think of anything that would help with actually breaking up concrete and landscaping, landscaping an area. Although there are nonprofits like Rebuilding Together that perhaps could help with things.
Sure, sure. Oh, there's so much criteria around, around being knowledgeable for that project. But um, you know, through this, and I'm thinking, well, gee, that would be great to think that there is a community of, who'll say, these were paved by, you know, back years ago and would like to see this happen, but it really isn't a project that's affordable in, at this particular time. So hoping that there was some redevelopment of some sort, but I'm sure that if there was, you'd bring it to our attention.
And, and that's not to say there, there, I'm just saying right now there isn't, but you know, that could be something that we could investigate.
And then the other is, uh, the question that I have is around, um, the pods are becoming more popular, those uh storage units that are in front of, of homes and, and businesses. Uh, and I understand those, I mean, construction are really useful to have. And so I don't know if there's been any comment or input uh towards your office around these. I'm seeing them more, I, I have one myself in the process of construction, so um, so I wanted to just basically get your, your input on that.
They, our, our policy is that, you know, you have to have an encroachment permit if you're actually to store in this street, but we generally don't allow an encroachment permit to go for that long. Uh, we allow them to be within the driveway um while they have an active building permit or in their, or they're in the process of getting a building permit and they need to store things during the construction process.
Okay, so they, they're in alignment with the building permit?
Correct.
Which sort, which gives them the?
Yeah.
That's good, that's great. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Bezzari.
I'm in agreement with the city council in regard to item one and two, a combination of those. What can we do to encourage sustainable landscaping? Um, limit lawn areas? You know, what, what items can we add to this? I mean, we're giving it, I agree with going, with changing the code so that there's some teeth to this. But what can we do in addition to that to encourage people to use sensible landscaping?
I think the short answer to that is require it within the code. Um, but I think that's something that we'll be discussing with the planning commission and the city council as we do our full-on zoning, zoning code, comprehensive zoning code amendment, which will be the first comprehensive zoning code in almost thirty years. So I mean, it's gonna be a real chance to take a look at everything from a sustainability point of view and do the sustainability audit and see where we're missing right now and where we could do better and, you know, be the leaders uh within that area. And a lot of it would be, it could be, you know what, you, you can't, you can't have lawn in your front yard or you can have a certain percentage of lawn within your front yard, and the rest has to be drought tolerant landscaping.
Okay, well, just my opinion, I'd be in favor of item one and two combined together with, with some sort of um promotion of sustainable landscaping, a limit on lawns or um, you know, uh, maybe the community development director having some latitude to um approve creative designs. You know, someone may come up with something new or something different, and there should be some latitude for you to work with that.
Correct. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions for, for staff?
My last question is on, um, there is quite of, sort of this new trend towards, I don't wanna say, uh, you know, the turf, that new type of grass. Uh, it's been at many of the fairs, they're presenting it in golf courses and football fields. Has there been any, um, any projects in San Bruno that have, um, that are, that are visible to the public? And what's your thinking around it?
Yeah, I, I, I haven't seen, I know, I've heard of people within San Bruno installing, and I know that it's becoming more and more uh popular. I don't know offhand of any of the addresses or if there's been any uh, any of it done within the front yards. I'm the, I'm most familiar with it, seeing it on the football fields and soccer fields. And it really does, I mean, I think it is, you know, the, when cities start to regulate the amount of lawn that you could have due to water issues, or even if the state or federal government starts to regulate the lawn issues, that this is gonna be, and if done right, it does, it does look good.
If done right, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yeah, if you're interested in one that received an award, there's one on Bayview in Millbrae that's just toward the airport from where Santa Lucia intersects Bayview. It's about halfway down the hill.
Are you referring to that particular lawn or landscaped?
Landscaped, and landscaping in front of the house received a, a Millbrae, City Millbrae Award. There's a sign, small sign on the lawn, you can see.
It does not have that artificial type grasses?
Yeah, it's, it's artificial turf.
Okay.
Plus wood chips and uh zero escaping.
So that was Bayview and?
It's just about halfway down the hill toward the airport from Santa Lucia. I think it'd be about, let's see, about five twenty-five Bayview.
But on Bayview, okay, thank you.
You wanna know why I know the numbers, right?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Bezzari.
You know, I was in Menlo Park a couple of weeks ago doing a walking tour of a couple of neighborhoods, and they had done a really fine job of promoting sustainable landscaping. And I, in retrospect, now thinking about it, they did a lot of encouraging edible landscaping. Um, we might wanna include some of that language in our um ordinance or in our green, where we, you know, encourage people to put edible items in their landscaping.
Are there any other questions? Okay, moving on to um city staff discussion.
All right, the first is an update on current developments. Uh, this is something I presented to the city council about a month ago. Uh, just to, I know the planning commission has requested that we follow up on some developments that you've approved to give you the status of them, and it's, it's a, as, as the planning commission knows, during the boom between two thousand two and I'd say two thousand seven, the planning commission and city council approved over fifteen hundred units within San Bruno. Uh, most of those, most of those were built, um, but another, none of, a number of them have been paused at this point um that are not going forward. Um, some are under construction right now, but moving slowly. It seems like the number one thing that you hear is not so much a demand-based uh situation right now, but lending just isn't there, especially for the larger developments. So I'll, they'll take you through about ten different developments here quickly. You could, you could stop me at any time, and I'm starting with the, one of the smaller ones. The first is Peace Lutheran Church site. This is uh just north of the intersection of uh San Bruno Avenue and Glenview. It's where the church is. They were proposing to subdivide their property and build five new homes. It almost made it to the architectural review level. Unfortunately, at the last second, about a month ago, the applicant decided not to move forward with the project. So there is no project at this time. Uh, but what the church is proceeding to do most likely is do the lot split themselves, to set it up for a developer so they could sell that parcel. And they said that they do have people that may be interested in ultimately developing the five homes on the site. So that's something you may see. The second is Cedar Grove Town Homes. Uh, as you know, this is on the corner of Cedar and Pepper, but ended up being, actually, it's not townhomes. It started as townhomes, it ended up as single-family homes, rather very large, large homes, although a lot of it was a basement area. Uh, this one, the developer who presented to you is no longer in business as a developer. Um, like many mid-size or small developers, they didn't, weren't able to withstand the current economy. They were out of the Central Valley, and a majority of Central Valley uh, uh, construction and development businesses are no longer in existence. So this was one that fell victim to the current economy. The developer is now, the development itself, the approvals itself are now for sale for two point seven million dollars, and they're shopping the project, the churches. My guess is that when this project does come back, and it, it will come back at some point, is that it's gonna be for smaller homes. A good thing is that we've seen a trend nationwide that where people were proposing three to five thousand square foot homes during the boom because of energy costs, because of construction costs, and because of sustainability. People are generally going back down to more traditional sizes, you know, at least under twenty-four hundred square feet, somewhere around that, or below two thousand square feet. The third project is also around the same size and next door to that, Peace Lutheran Church project. It's on the corner of Glenview, is Glenview and San Bruno Avenue, little over an acre in size. And the planning commission, over three years ago now, approved the Glenview Terrace project. There was an extension of the approval given, uh, I believe, last year. Uh, we have, we have seen very little activity. It's also for sale for three, about three million dollars for the sixteen units. They're rather large units, and I would also guess with this one, you'll see them come back and downsize the homes when they actually propose them. Skycrest, also near there. Um, twenty-four single-family homes were approved. Here's an example of one on the photograph within the PowerPoint. Twelve have been constructed, uh, about half have been sold, a little less than half have been sold. The others have been rented out, so they're fully occupied. The developer also came back and requested an extension, and they do have an extension. He thinks that the market may turn around, around two thousand twelve, and that's when he's expected to go forward again with the twelve additional homes and start construction there. Downtown Cinema Site, this is probably our, the, the project the planners were most excited about. Uh, this is to tear down a bank building as well as two bars next door, uh, build fifteen thousand square feet of retail as well as forty-eight condominiums. Like most developers, the, the problem is that there's lending, there's lending issues. We have seen some recent activity with this one, even a phone call today, that's, it appears that something may be coming through in terms of investments, uh, where people used to get lending, lending from, you know, eighty, seventy percent of their lending from American banks. The banks aren't lending big projects like this, so you're either having to find out-of-the-country banks or you're having to find private investors to make up that difference. So right now, the developer who's out of Hong Kong is looking from either investors within China or banks within China that are willing to finance the project. And it sounds like from a phone call we got today that there may be some progress in that search. Park Plaza condominium conversion. This is on Whitman Way. It's actually an interesting one. This is one that was apartment complex built in the sixties, was approved to go to condominiums during the late eighties. Uh, I mean, during the early eighties, when there was a big condominium craze, including the Shelter Creek. Well, Shelter Creek came online and was right across the street at the same time as this. So after this, after this project received approval, uh, they got two approvals. They got their map approval, tentative map approval, which allows them to subdivide the actual units. They kept that on file, but they repealed their use permit, which is their local approval, so that they could get back some of the fees that were associated with that. Well, now they're coming forward again with their use permit request to meet their local requirements. Uh, they're doing a number of upgrades to the front of the building. Um, this will come to you within the next couple of months. Uh, a thing to note, you know, there's also a lot of concern about longtime residents. Our code is actually pretty good in covering residents. If you're a senior citizen or you're disabled, you're able to stay in there for a number of years without having rent increases if you choose to stay. You also have first right to purchase the units if you live within there. If you choose to move, um, the developer has to pay for four months of living expenses, is, uh, four months of rent as well as your moving expenses. So there's a lot of things built within there to encourage the developer to keep the current residents and offer them affordable prices to purchase the unit, rather than just making everyone leave as this converts. Uh, the Merrimott subdivision, this one is seventy single-family homes built on the former Carl Sandburg site. This actually has gone forward, all the building permits have been pulled, about half have been sold. Uh, they expect construction to finalize within the next year or so, and hopefully all the homes have been sold. What's interesting about this one is it's uh consistent with the nationwide trend of smaller homes. They came back with a number of smaller floor plans, and those are the ones that sold right away. So uh, it, I think it did two, it reduced the price point to make it more affordable, but people are generally getting used to smaller homes, and uh, that's what the developer decided to go forward with. The next development has been recently named Acapella at the Crossing. This is S and K's development, the last residential phase of the crossing. It's three hundred and fifty total condominiums. However, about half of those, a hundred and sixty-three will be rented out, held by the developer and rented out. And those are actually going to come online and being, begin to run out within the next couple of weeks. The second is a hundred and eighty-seven unit building, expected sometime in the middle of next year, maybe springtime, early summer of next year, and that would be for sale product, slightly larger units. Um, but they're all quality units, and they, there, there's a lot of demand for rental housing still within the crossing, so they're excited to get that online. Treetops probably are most troublesome developments. Uh, this was originally approved to go through for about three years ago, to, to go from a three hundred and eight unit to a five hundred and to a 510-unit building. They got approvals, they were going to move forward, they vacated the whole apartment complex, and now it's vacant for that time, and they can't get financing for the 510-unit building. Recently, within the last month, they came back to us and they said they would prefer to go forward themselves. They actually tried to sell the project for a while, they weren't successful, so they actually want to go forward themselves now with a remodel of the existing 308 unit. So we're working with them right now on building code issues to see what they would have to meet in terms of building code. So we're doing that with them right now, and hopefully, that will, the neighborhood will see some positive improvement with that within the next year or so. Crossing Retail, this is another project that's actually just broke ground and under construction. 12,250 square feet of retail and restaurant space. About 5,400 of that space has already been leased out to a restaurant called, it's going to be called Jax of San Bruno. It's a, the Marco Vici brothers, who are a local family, three brothers that grew up in the area, that own Boulevard Cafe in Daly City. This is going to be their higher-end restaurant, and they're excited about moving in here. It's been really fun to work with them and see their project go forward from when they first went forward, they first proposed it, to where it is now, and some of the plans that have been proposed, and the type of interior improvements that were approved by the city council. In general, in regards to other activity, I think that the planning commission has seen that agendas that used to be full of six, seven use permits in the past, now they have two or three use permits. We're averaging, over the last two years, about 40 use permits a year, where it was about 80 use permits a year during the three peak years of 2000, say, middle of 2004, 2005, 2006, and into '07. So we're not seeing, I think what we're seeing is people who were doing thousand-square-foot additions now are maybe doing two, 300-square-foot additions and remodeling their homes. So we have seen a decrease in building permit activity, but there is still building permit and construction activity out there, that's just less dramatic than it was before. Some new businesses. Hooters is opening up in Tanforan. Planning commission reviewed that application. It's expected for a December opening. There's also a store called Romper Room, which is a kids' play-type store, that's also proposed to be opening, they're in the building permit process right now. And a Brazilian Steakhouse, I think you saw that as an application, is proposed in the downtown area to where the old Kids Cuts is. So that's kind of a summary of the 10 major, I believe it's 10 major projects in San Bruno, so I could take any questions that you have at this time.
Through the chair.
Ms. Peterson.
Is there a lot of damage to treetops?
Yes. There's a lot of damage just from having a vacant building there. Weathered building over the years, so if they were doing any type of construction project, they're basically taking it down to the studs, skinning the building inside and out, and then rebuilding from there.
They, excuse me, you might make sure they realize that a lot of the outside wasn't properly designed in the first place, and they're going to be in trouble if they think that can hold weather.
Yeah, I think they're going to definitely go away from the wood-based materials on the exterior and go to more of a hardy plank.
Something, yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Beasari.
On treetops, has the fire department had access to that yet to practice?
Yes. And that's a portion of the damage was, you know, they did SWAT drills in there, and a lot of the damage is done from a weathered building, but they also did tactical drills within there when we all believed that the building would be demolished in the long run.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? First off? Okay. And next item is planning and commission discussion.
Through the chair. Just wanted to wish Aaron congratulations on his wedding.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
On the record.
In order. And?
One of the ARC members. Commissioner Chase already agreed. Do we have two other ones? The other commissioners, Commissioner Samut? I will ask Mr. Marshall, if not, I'll be giving the rest of you a call.
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll be on standby for that one.
Okay.
There are no other items, and meeting adjourned.